Microphones are on. I'd like to call the committee of the whole, regular committee of the whole scheduled for Monday, September 22nd, 2014, to order. Please note, all the aldermen are present except for Alderman Cummings. My name is Rich Marks and I am one of the aldermen for the Second Ward. Mayor, I think you wanted to take-
Yeah, we have a very interesting and very exciting introduction to make. Mr. Babica, if you could please join us at the microphone. Ladies and gentlemen, here this evening, and those of you tuning in at home, this gentleman is the city of Geneva's brand-new, as in day one, Director of Public Works.
Yes, sir.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
Not everyone has had the pleasure of looking at your credentials, but I did want to brag about you a little bit, if I may. Okay. Elementary school, you graduated at the bottom of your clothes?
You're not far off on that one.
No, is that right? We did call your teacher, in fact, she's here tonight. A graduate of Illinois State.
Yes, sir.
Very cool. No need to reference years on this. So you're a Red Bird?
I am a Red Bird.
Through and through. Earned your master's degree from DePaul University.
Blue Demons.
Blue Demons. Are we going to do this all night?
Football team's still undefeated.
Yes, they are.
It's our bragging point.
It reflects the money they spend on the program. This is interesting. A cadet officer in the Bravo Company, 123rd Infantry, Illinois Army National Guard, from 1990 to 1992.
Yes, sir. As, uh, when I was at Illinois State, I was going through their ROTC program, and in order to expand our practical experiences, they post us to local National Guard units.
That's really cool.
And, uh, yeah. They have a history that dates back to the Mexican-American War.
Is that right?
Yeah, the first one. So it was a quite historical tradition there in that company.
Wow.
Which no longer exists, but it was a very proud group of people that I served with, and it was my pleasure to be with them.
Now, I believe you had mentioned to me that you had actually considered a career in the military.
I did. That was indeed my career track, right up to about, about three months before graduation. I cracked my kneecap on a field exercise and the military felt they no longer needed my services. But, uh, no complaints. I, I learned a lot, went through a lot of life experiences with them, and their tuition assistance definitely helped also.
That's wonderful. And throughout your career in the National Guard, not one Indiana resident came into Illinois, is that true?
Not, 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 not illegally. They were all legal that crossed the border.
That's, that's awesome. Mr. Babica is a licensed Illinois Department Agricultural Pesticide Public Application Guru.
Correct.
That's pretty cool. A licensed IEP-A Class D Water Operator.
Yes, sir.
Certified Illinois Municipal Specialist Arborist.
Correct. My career actually started out with the village of Bolingbrook during the winter months on their tree trimming crew. And through some practical experiences and some continued education, I was able to get my arborist certification, and I'm actually considered a municipal specialist, which is the next tier up for, for municipal arborists geared more towards, you know, the things like liability.
Sure.
And, uh, planning, and, uh, most notably now, unfortunately, dealing with the Emerald Ash Forest.
Exactly, yeah.
Which has been a rather unpleasant experience for all of us.
Indeed. So obviously you know what tree this is on the seal.
I'm going to go with an oak tree.
Very good. Close enough. What is it, a silk ficus? What? It's a bur oak. It's a bur oak.
Without seeing the leaf, I, I will not contend your observations.
That's good enough. Do you still serve as the liaison to the Council of Mayors for Transportation Subcommittee?
I will now for the city of Geneva.
Fantastic. That's an important position. You also serve in the Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network Management Committee.
Correct. Actually with former Director Dan Dingies. We're both members on the same committee.
That's amazing. And you hail from?
Uh, my, my hometown was Bolingbrook, Illinois, where I spent the majority of my youth growing up. But I currently live in the village of Bartlett, which is relatively close by, so about 14 miles away.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's a breeze.
Yeah.
Now that the construction's done on 64 and-
And now they're getting ready for new construction on 59, but that's life in Illinois. You just kind of-
That's all Mayor Rogita's fault too, by the way, so. Well, we're delighted to have you onboard. I know most of you had met Rich this morning. We had a brief open house at Public Works. You met your team, you said a few words to all those assembled, and we're just delighted to have you onboard.
I am thrilled to be here, and I'm looking forward to bringing my 22 years of experience to, to enhance the efficiency of the department and enhance quality of life for the, the city of Geneva.
Wonderful. Well, I know you're going to be with us all evening because we have questions regarding several of the agenda items that I'm certain you're proficient about.
Which is why I, I'm a member of my staff along.
Already delegating. What do you think, guys? Welcome aboard, Mr. Babica.
Thank you, sir.
Any comments for Mr. Babica? Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. All of you received an email this morning from me regarding a addition to our agenda tonight, which is not on the agenda, but we have some very distinguished guests from the world of figure skating with us this evening. Mr. Mann, if you'd like to take the podium and introduce the guests who are joining you, these are illustrious figures in the world of figure skating. I've had the pleasure of knowing them for years. Mr. Mann, welcome.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. My name is Edward Mann. I'm President of the Skating Council of Illinois, representing 13 figure skating clubs throughout the state. I'm also on the Board of Directors of U.S. Figure Skating, the national governing body of figure skating. With me tonight, Mae Wiza, our, the council's Vice President, Lois Todd, the council's Treasurer, and Lanny Nelson, the, this council's Treasurer, Secretary.
You guys all didn't travel in the same car for security.
No, we, we did not. We have to, we're required to travel separately.
Oh, you, I can imagine.
And we're keeping score. I went to Northwestern, go Cats.
Ah, Northwestern. That's a commuter school mostly, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's-
Yes. So, um, the Skating Council of Illinois has, the 13 clubs have come together to, to schedule the Midwestern Championships. The, U.S. Figure Skating has a three-tier elimination rounds to get to the national championships. They have nine regions going to three sections that go into Nationals. So Midwesterns is the second step for 22 states. We have a potential of about 360 competitors who could qualify to come to this competition, and then the top four in each discipline go on to the U.S. Nationals, which this year are being held in Greensboro, North Carolina, in January. So this is the track for the kids who want to go to the Worlds and the Olympic competitions. It all, it all is going to pass through Geneva in November. We're here at the Fox Valley Ice Arena, November 9th, I'm sorry, the 19th through the 22nd, and we are looking forward to partnering with the city of Geneva to, to help our 300-plus skaters and their families and their coaches and their fans enjoy themselves while they're in town, spending money and buying food and, and trinkets and whatever else, because they're not going to spend all their time at the, at the ice arena. So we will, we're going around talking to restaurants and, and small businesses to look for some support and some publicity to help direct our skaters and their families to your local businesses. So we're very excited to be here. We're also in negotiations with the Fox Valley Ice Arena to host a dance competition in July, which we hope to be an annual event, and it would, we have every indication this could become a very, a major dance event. There aren't that many in the United States, and right now, the biggest is on the East Coast in Lake Placid, which is a wonderful location but very hard to get to. And there's been a lot of support to bring one to the Chicago area because it's so easy to get here. So we're hoping to present that at, also at Fox Valley in, in July, and we're hoping to announce that very shortly, so.
That's wonderful.
So, thank you, and we appreciate, I, we handed out a little information for you. This is the kind of sponsorship information that we're going to local businesses to, to solicit ads and in-kind donations, and just wanted you to be aware of what we're doing, so.
Now, Mr. Mann, for those of you, for those of us, whether, who are novices, if you will, in the sport.
Yes.
Those competing in Geneva in November, those who finish in the top four.
Right.
Of each discipline.
Of each discipline.
Are heading to the U.S. National Championships.
Correct, correct. We have, we have four disciplines, ladies, men's, pairs, and dance, and then there are actually five levels. The senior level, which is the Olympic level, and then below that, junior, novice, intermediate, and juvenile. So we get kids from, oh, age 12 on up, and the, the levels are based on skills, not on age. So you'll get, in each level, in each, in each category, you'll get a wide range of ages, but it's basically kids from age 12 and up. But you're absolutely correct, the, the top four in each group do go to the U.S. Championships, and the senior levels have a chance to go to, to the world competitions and then qualify for Olympics, so.
Very exciting.
It's, it's very exciting, and, and as I said, this is representing kids from 22 states in the Midwest who have gone through three different regions to get here. So this will all be at Fox Valley in, in November, so we're very excited. And I brought along a short video, just to kind of give you a taste of what it is we're doing here.
Excellent.
With your permission.
Oh, please do, sir.
(music playing) When life leaves you high and dry, I'll be at your door tonight if you need help, if you need help. I'll shut down the city lights. All I cheat, I beg and bribe to make you well, to make you well. When enemies are at your door, I'll carry you away from more if you need help, if you need help. Your hope dangling by a string, I'll share in your suffering to make you well, to make you well. Give me reasons to believe that you would do the same for me, and I will do it for you, for you. Baby, I'm not moving on. I'll love you long after you're gone, for you, for you. You will never sleep alone. I'll love you long after you go, and long after you're gone, gone, gone. When you fall like a statue, I'm gonna be there to catch you, put you on your feet, you on your feet. And if your well is empty, not a thing will prevent me, tell me what you need, what do you need? I surrender honestly. You've always done the same for me, so I will do it for you, for you. Baby, I'm not moving on. I'll love you long after you're gone, for you, for you. You will never sleep alone. I'll love you long after you go, and long after you're gone, gone, gone. You're my backbone, you're my cornerstone, you're my crutch when my legs start moving. You're my head start, you're my rugged heart, you're the pulse that I've always needed. Like a drum, baby, don't stop beating. Like a drum, baby, don't stop beating. Like a drum, baby, don't stop beating. Like a drum, my heart never stops beating. For you, for you. Baby, I'm not moving on. I'll love you long after you're gone, for you, for you. You will never sleep alone. I'll love you long after you go, for you, for you. Baby, I'm not moving on. I'll love you long after you're gone, for you, for you. You will never sleep alone. I'll love you long, long after you go. Like a drum, baby, don't stop beating. Like a drum, baby, don't stop beating. Like a drum, baby, don't stop beating. Like a drum, my heart never stops beating for you, and long after you're gone, gone, gone. I'll love you long after you're gone, gone, gone. I'm proud to say quite a number of those came through the Midwest, and we will see some of those here in November, but more importantly, we'll see the next generation coming up, which is very exciting, and tickets are available. We encourage you to come on out and, and see it. It is an audience participation, and the, the more people we get in the stands, the more exciting it is for the kids, so, thank you.
Well, Mr. Mann, you might not be aware of this, but we have a member of the city council, this gentleman here, who actually skated with Sonja Henning. And, um-
(laughing)
You asked for it.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Mann, Mr. Brown? Excuse me, I was-
Yes, for that, Mr. Mann. Presuming the tickets are available both through your website and through Fox Valley Ice Arena?
Uh, they are available through the website, and they will be available onsite at Fox Valley, yes, sir.
Wonderful, because I'm sure there's people that are interested. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, and we appreciate any help you can give us getting the word out, so, thank you.
Thank you so much. Now, is that inspiring, Mr. Runch?
Makes him want to go out and ice skate.
Trivia question, who skated at the 1968 U.S. Championships, did not do well, but later went on to a career in fashion design? Vera Wang, very good.
Oh, wow.
That's something. And who dated Tonya Harding?
(laughing)
Sorry, Mr. Mann, I had to bring that up. Feel free to sneak out, guys, because you got a heck of a drive, so. And I'll be in touch with you tomorrow regarding some stuff.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you for indulging-
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Back to the agenda?
We'll saukow over to you.
Give you a little floor, and there it goes. The next item on the agenda is actually to consider the consent agenda, and the only item on the consent agenda is to approve the committee of the whole minutes from the September 8th, 2014 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, seconded by Alderman Singer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 3 is done. Items of business. 4A, recommend draft resolution awarding bid and contract to Glenn Brook Excavating and Concrete Inc. in the amount of $72,205 for the 2014 Second Street Ellie Improvement Project.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Simoni, and seconded by Alderman Sino. Comments, questions? Anything from the staff? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor of the item, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item 4B is recommend draft resolution awarding bid and contract to Stewart Spreading in the amount of $153,748 for the 2014 BioSolids Land Application Program.
So moved.
Motion by Simoni, and seconded by Alderman Kilburg. Questions, comments? This is a three-year contract, I believe.
Right.
Is what we are doing, yes. Any, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Also, that will be unanimously recommended. Item 4C is recommend draft resolution authorizing execution of professional services agreement with ESI Consultants, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $28,650 for Route 31 Water Main Replacement Design Services.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion by Alderman Simoni, and seconded by Alderman Sino. Comments, questions? Well, you're going to have an easy week next week, let me tell you.
I know. You and Bruno just wondering to do this.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Unanimous again. Item 4D, we have recommend draft ordinance for 15th restatement of ordinance 2003-33 Delener Community Planned Unit Development, East Lawn Pond and Site Signage Enhancement Project.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Flanagan?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Bruno. Comments, questions? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous again. Item 4E is recommend draft resolution adopting homes for a changing region, Central Fox Valley Housing Plan for Batavia, Geneva, North Aurora, and St. Charles.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Kingberg Kilburg, seconded by Alderman Singer, and I believe Director Runch has some people here too, or are you making the presentation?
I do, indeed. After a, a year of very diligent work on this project, I'm pleased, we're pleased to present to the city council for review and consideration, the Central Fox Valley Housing Plan. It's actually under the Homes of the Changing Region format for Batavia, Geneva, North Aurora, and St. Charles. I'm joined this evening by several folks. First, I want to point out members of the Geneva Housing Task Force that directed and guided and provided input each step of the way on the development of this plan. We have Maureen McKeo from Task Force, and John Ford, who has been an active participant at Task Force meetings, Chuck Miles, and John Rice, and John Martin, all of the Task Force. Also this evening, I've got with us Drew Williams Clark, who is the project manager from CMAP, the organization that we went to to really give us the, the resources and the capability to do this plan, and he's joined by Brett Hanlon from the County Planning Staff, King County Planning Staff, the Development Department specifically, and he, along with another planner on staff, Ellen Johnson, who's not here this evening, really did the yeoman work in terms of doing all of the data analysis and number crunching required to, to really get our arms around existing conditions in Geneva as far as housing goes, and, and really looking at this in an analytical kind of way to come up with some, some clear findings and ultimately recommendations that are in the plan. I want to back up a little bit by just making a few comments. The adopted city of Geneva strategic plan calls for the preparation of a plan for creating affordable housing. This goal is focused on defining and analyzing both existing and future housing needs, potential locations where affordable housing might be placed, and actions that the city might take to enhance housing affordability. Initially, the goal surfaced because of resident concerns over the apparent lack of affordable housing for seniors, and Alderman Singer has been a champion of, of this, this apparent need for a number of years, and it was really only through our, our, our work with CMAP that we were able to get this project off the ground, because it is a, it's an endeavor that takes some horsepower, both analytical horsepower and just staff and money to, to get done. Over this past year, the four communities have collaborated with a, a group of, of entities here, the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, the King County Development Department, as I mentioned, and CMAP, the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, along with the Metropolitan Planning Council, and Nancy Furfer, who I think most of you have met from, in some of our earlier meetings in King Harris, have been just tremendous supporters for the Homes for Changing Region Program. This is the seventh group of municipalities, the seventh year of the program's existence, so you've got, over the course of those many years, groups of municipalities throughout the Chicago Metropolitan Region have been looking at their housing needs and developing housing plans, and so it's great to be a part of that, that effort and that activity. The four municipalities share a common interest in better understanding their individual housing needs and identifying the actions they can take to enhance affordability. The process used to develop the plans for each municipality in our group analyzes current housing, the capacity for creating new housing, the relationship between the city's workforce and housing, and housing needs by age and income group, not, not just seniors, but a full age and income spectrum in, in Geneva. For the Geneva portion of the plan, a community workshop was held to gather ideas from residents on the future of housing in our community, and the draft plan was also reviewed, as I mentioned, by the, by the Task Force, and the city council was directly involved in meetings and workshops as our work progressed over the year. I won't get into the specific, specifics of the recommendations, because that's why the gentleman to my left are here, so with that, I will turn it over to them and they can share with you some summary findings from the plan.
How are we going to be able to do this? That's the question.
I see it, and there it's- Thank you. Now, let's see, what we've got to do is we've got to move this over.
Oh, the, the man from behind the curtain is coming to us.
No, and now I'm going to change the PowerPoint slides. Who's going?
The wizard has a-
The wizard is here.
No, I'm not good.
Start it.
Okay.
Start the slideshow.
Start the slideshow. Okay, let's see, where are we? Slideshow?
From the beginning.
From the beginning.
There we go.
Voila.
See, told you, that's all you need, is the guy from behind the curtain.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, as Dick mentioned, a little bit over a year ago, began the process of developing Homes for Change in Region Plan for the city of Geneva. We're now at a point where we have a final draft of the plan, and we're looking for feedback from you guys tonight, so that we can revise accordingly and then transfer into the implementation phase of the plan. So tonight, I'm going to present to you guys with an overview of the data analysis, and then going to turn it over to Drew, and he's going to outline the recommendations that we've generated, and these generate, these recommendations are going to help you guys guide development to help meet the needs of your increasing, aging, and diversifying So, the Homes for a Change in Region Program is a collaborative effort between the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, CMAP, and the Metropolitan Planning Council. The process is brought to you free of charge through funding from the HUD Sustainable Communities Initiative, the Chicago Community Trust, the Illinois Housing Development Authority, and the Harris Family Foundation. And it really is a new, innovative, unique way to do housing planning. It's people-focused, so all of the analyses were done by looking at the residents who are already living in your city, and then projecting how their needs were going to change over the next 26 years. It's market-based, so we didn't look at any public housing or subsidized housing, this is all based on market forces, good old-fashioned supply and demand. It's subregional, as Dick mentioned. A lot of the issues that you guys are experiencing here in Geneva are also prevalent in St. Charles, North Aurora, and Batavia, and so, in addition to the set of municipal recommendations that I'm going to, Drew's going to present to you tonight, there's also a set of subregional recommendations that you can work on with your partner communities to bring more attainable housing to the subregion. When the plan finally is ready to be printed, it's going to include a subregional report, and it's going to begin with a subregional report, then the municipal section's going to start off with a summary, there'll be an existing conditions report, there'll be a current housing analysis, there'll be a section that projects future housing needs, there's a capacity analysis, so the planning staff, or the planning team worked, met with your planning staff, to look at existing zoning and look at existing planned unit developments, and we determined how many new units could possibly be built out with that existing zoning and approved planned unit developments in place. So I'll get, I'll go in-depth about that here in a moment. There's also an urban design focus area that I'll show you guys tonight, and then I'm going to pass it over to Drew, and he'll outline the recommendations for you. So to begin the data analysis, I wanted to go over some very general demographic, some demographic data for the city of Geneva. As of the most recent American Community Survey, there were 21,550 residents living in the city. This is growth of approximately 10% over the last decade, and according to CMAP's Go-To 2040 Plan projections, Geneva can expect nearly 30,000 residents by the year 2040, so this is growth of nearly 40% over the next 26 years. So before I continue on with the data analysis, I want to establish exactly what it is that we mean when we say affordable housing. So the Homes Plan considers a household to be cost-burdened if they're paying more than 30% of their income on housing costs. So for an owner-occupied household, this is going to be their mortgage, their property taxes, their homeowner's insurance. For a renter, it's simply gross rent. And if a household is over 30%, there's also two levels of unaffordability. If they're paying between 30 and 50% of their household income on housing costs, they're simply, it's simply considered unaffordable. If they're paying over 50% of their income on housing, that's considered severely unaffordable. So this 30% threshold is a time-tested standard, it's used in underwriting practices, it's used by the U.S. Census Bureau, and it's used in this plan. So this first graph is showing the percentage of owner-occupied households that are paying more than 30% of their income on housing costs. So this is just owner-occupied, this isn't renter, this is comparing a couple of different things. It's comparing Geneva with the seven-county CMAP region, and then it's also analyzing the trend of affordability over the last decade. So what you'll see is if you look at the taller bar in the Geneva section of the plan, you'll see that 32% of Geneva homeowners are paying over 30% of their income on housing expenses. This is currently, this is up 23, from 23% in the year 2000. You'll notice the very dark blue is showing that 11% of homeowners are currently paying over 50% of their income on housing, 21%- over 50% of their income on housing, 21% between 30 and 49%. You can see this mirrors generally what's happened in the seven-county CMAP region. This is the result of an increase in property values despite the recession. It's the result of declining incomes, slow employment growth, and more stringent lending This next graph is showing the same information only for renters. Again, we see the tall bar over Geneva is showing that 53% of renters in Geneva are currently paying more than 30% of their income on rent. And this is up quite substantially from the year 2000 when only 31% of residents were paying over 30% of their income on rent. And again, you can see this mirrors generally what's happened in the seven-county CMAP region. This next graph is a lot to look at. I'm going to take a moment to break it down for you guys. The X-axis is showing income ranges. The Y-axis is showing housing units. The dashed gray bars are showing the occupied housing stock that's affordable at 30% of income for each income range. So this can be looked at as your housing or your supply. The blue is your demand, so that's the people or the residents. Your light blue is current demand and the dark blue is projected demand by the year 2040. So what we see in this graph is that there is currently and there's projected to remain a sufficient supply of housing for those earning between $50,000 and $100,000 a year. We see that there's projected shortfall in supply for those earning more than $150,000 a year. And then we can see that there's quite a significant shortfall in supply for those earning less than $50,000 a year. And this indicates a great opportunity for the city to help guide development to meet the needs or the demands of your low-to-moderate-income residents. The next graph is showing the same data only for renters. And so what this is showing is that there's currently and projected to remain a sufficient supply of housing for those earning between $35,000 and $50,000 a year. You have projected shortfalls in supply for those earning more than $75,000 a year. And then you have quite a significant shortfall in supply for those earning between $15,000 and $35,000 a year. And this is particularly a concern for these residents because it means there's a complete lack of housing available for them. These are folks who aren't able to buy in the City of Geneva and they're not even able to find anywhere to rent. Geneva's experienced an increasing senior demographic, and so that demographic accounts for a lot of this current and future demand. Consider a lifelong resident who has lived in Geneva their entire life, they're looking to retire and downsize and find a small rental property in the city, the city that they love, and they're simply not able to find anything like this, so they're forced to leave the community. And this is just one example of why it's so important to provide a variety of different housing types to let somebody, you know, if they are a Geneva resident and they want to remain a Geneva resident, they should have that option. This next slide is showing two different graphs. I want to first talk about the graph on the left. This is comparing the development capacity in the city with the estimated need for units out to the year 2040. So this data comes from the capacity analysis that we did with the planning staff where we looked at basically land for new development, underutilized property for redevelopment. And we took a look at the zoning that was currently in place. We analyzed the zoning code and we determined how many new units could possibly be built with the current zoning in place. And then we also added on the approved planned unit developments and took a look at that build-out capacity. And so that is the blue, the solid blue color. The dashed blue is showing the estimated need for units out to the year 2040. So what we see is that the estimated need for units is going to outstrip the development capacity by nearly 2,900 units. You can see across the board, there's going to be shortfalls in capacity. Geneva does have a lot of capacity for multifamily, and that's reflective of a couple of the different planned unit developments that are approved. And that's, that can be looked at as a positive. That's a, it's a great asset for the City of Geneva going forward. The next graph on the right is simply taking the estimated need for units in the light blue, that's basically the same number, it is the same number. And that's just adding that on to the occupied housing stock. So you see Geneva's predominantly single-family homes. And there's projected to be an estimated increase in all housing types going forward. So now, we're going to transition and talk a little bit about the urban design focus area. This was the parcel that we, that staff wanted to basically come up with a conceptual development plan for. This is the southeast corner of Bennett Street and State Street. It can be looked at as an underutilized property. We held a public workshop here in November and it was very well-attended. So we gathered feedback from your residents, from the planning staff, and from public officials. And we were able to come up with a mini-plan for the site. And this is basically what people wanted to see. You have a mixed-use multifamily development. So you have a commercial use or retail use either on the corner or on the first floor in general. And then you have your housing, multifamily housing on the second floor, or maybe utilizing the remainder of the parcel. It'd be ideal to have something that would draw pedestrians to it. So you have pedestrians going to the east side of Bennett Street and you really kind of breathe life back into the East State Street corridor. So with that in mind, I'm going to turn it over to Drew and he's going to outline the recommendations for you.
Thanks so much, Brett. Before we get started, I want to talk a little bit about the way that the recommendations section of the Geneva plan was written. And that, as we discussed at previous meetings, is because Geneva is on the not-exempt list of communities for the Affordable Housing Planning and Appeals Act, which means that you are required within 18 months of last January to submit an affordable housing plan. And so what we wanted to do is make sure that the plan that we produced for you would meet your compliance obligations under APA. And so, all of these recommendations to some degree build into that. But the first goal was based on one of three that could be selected under the APA law. So essentially, this is one of the required goals that a community is required to choose among in order to meet compliance obligations. So the first recommendation is to establish a goal that 15% of all new housing units will be affordable housing. And so we talk a little bit about how Geneva is a built-out community. You saw the demand graphs, looking at how much demand there would be for large-lot, single-family housing. It's a very difficult bar to meet, given the amount of land that's available and the amount of units that you can put on a large lot, lot. And so we wanted to make sure that there was something that sort of constrained that a little bit and guided it towards the demand that we identified. So, we also suggest considering an inclusionary zoning ordinance. We've talked about that to some degree in the past. But we also think that the subsequent recommendations, if implemented aggressively, could meet, could meet the established, sorry, could actually fulfill this goal of having 15% regardless of if an IZ ordinance were pursued. Second was to amend zoning codes to allow for compact residential development in key areas. So identify a few different areas within the city where we think that zoning codes could be modified in order to allow for more units to be developed per acre, which brings down the per-unit cost of those units and thereby makes more affordable housing available within the city. We also encourage you to do, to make these changes by right so that it's easier for developers to actually go ahead and build units. Third, we say, we recommend you create an incentive-based overlay zoning district that encourages development of affordable housing. So essentially, this could be achieved through density bonuses or increased height allowances so that if developers do build units, so let's say they do 15% of a new multifamily development that is affordable housing, you then allow them to build higher or more units per acre in exchange for that. That makes it more affordable to the developer as well. So it helps them meet their pro forma needs and meet their profit margins. Recommendation number four is commission a downtown parking study. We've talked about this with Dick extensively and we know that you do have a project coming up that will allow you to pursue this. So we just want to sort of emphasize that required parking does add to the per-unit cost of any development. And so relaxing parking requirements does allow for more affordable housing to be developed. Number five, consider a foreclosure redevelopment program. So one thing to, this is sort of a further study recommendation and what we're advocating is to keep your eye on the data that the state now compels you to be able to receive for free, to note where foreclosures are happening so that you're able to make sure that owners, banks in this case, who are the owners of foreclosed properties, are able to keep up with maintenance demands, et cetera, which will, in the long run, preserve housing that is at this point affordable. We have, there's lots of stories from around the region of pipes freezing, et cetera, during the winter. And with no, with no occupant in the housing, it's more difficult to keep that housing in order for a long period of time. So having a redevelopment program that would partner with a nonprofit to implement a strategy that would be able to, one, track those foreclosures, but also eventually to be able to put some investment into keeping them available in the long run is a good strategy, again, in the long run. Number six, provide educational materials to citizens regarding housing trends, data, and related goals. This is something that we've been sort of advocating for in all four communities. We know that it's hard to get the message that we've just given to you over a series of graphs and a year's worth of conversation. We know that it's hard to make sure that constituents are stay informed about these trends as well. And so we've done some work over the past several years to package this information in a very readable format. We actually sort of have a poster back at the office in beta that we'll probably be able to share with you over the next several months that hopefully you can help distribute or at the very least hang up here at City Hall so that folks who are coming in and out are able to see the kinds of information that you've just seen and can sort of, again, in the long run, buy into these kinds of strategies. Because we know, again, in the long run, that can be difficult to keep people interested in. Recommendation number seven is providing, okay, this is just more bullets on the same recommendation, I apologize. And then the last recommendation is something that we are doing everywhere, so I don't want anyone here to feel like Geneva's being singled out in this regard. This is something that we're promoting across the region and it's something that are, these are strategies that reaffirm your commitment to be an open community by making very straightforward, simple changes to existing materials. So for one, make sure that on your website, you have a phone number that folks can call if they feel like they've been unfairly discriminated against. It's not saying that you have to have some kind of officer here to take those calls. It's just a very simple adding a number to your website so that people know where they can go. Because oftentimes, people who do feel as though they've been discriminated against will come first to a municipality before they... Oh, okay, thanks. Secondly, making sure that website materials are available in a variety of different languages depending on the language spoken in Geneva. And so one, another way that we've asked folks to try to deal with this is many different services will allow you to plug your URL into those services and then automatically translate your website. So this is not something that you, as a staff, would have to do and pick up the tab for necessarily. There are very simple web tools that would allow you to translate your website into a variety of different languages. And then number three, ensure that the city is complying both with the Illinois statutes and with the federal statutes under fair housing. And this really talks mostly about modifications that are required for new developments with regards to being compliant for those with disabilities. So it's a very, very simple thing to do, just making sure that when you're inspecting properties, or if you're inspecting properties, that you're making sure that they comply both with the state statutes and with the federal statutes. So Dick alerts me, and thank you, Dick, that the duplicate slide that we had in there was actually about registering and inspecting rental properties. We've had lots of different conversation about the limitations of a non-home rule community with regard to this particular recommendation. Mary's smiling at me. And so what we do know is that even though you're not home rule, you are able to inspect, you're just not allowed to revoke or give a license to a landlord. So there are ways that actually, that we are working with the MPC and with the Mayor's Caucus to identify more robust ways that non-home rule communities can continue to make sure that their renters and that their landlords are, you know, providing safe and healthy housing for your residents as well. So there will be more on this in the future, but for now, we are recommending that you continue, that you start a registration program. Even though you're not able to revoke a license, there are still other ways to make sure that landlords comply with basic health and safety requirements of properties. And so, with that, I wanted to make sure that we were brief in this presentation because we've had quite a bit of discussion in the past. I'm happy to answer any questions about these recommendations, even the slide that was duplicated, unfortunately. So please feel free to ask, we'll be here as long as you need us to be for this discussion.
Questions, comments? Old men in the ladder? Microphone, please.
Good.
I don't have a voice like he does.
I lost my voice.
That I was going to focus on most. I think that some of your recommendations call for tools that I don't know are available to us. You pointed out number seven, registration. We've seen the efficacy of fines in other areas, you know, our teardown and infill code. We can establish fines, shut down a project. One project I'm aware of, we shut down three times. They don't really make a dent.
Okay.
I think that, I think that the tool that we need is the tool that lets us revoke a license. You talk about the incentive zoning. I'm not sure that we're even able to do that. My only point to the council and to everybody is that as we, as we go forward with this, I think it's important that we go forward with the tools that we need to make sure that, that the changes that we're looking to implement cause no harm, but also serve only to enhance the community and quality of life and things like that. We should not diminish the importance of having those tools. My own personal experience, living next to a Section 8, my grandmother living in a building that went Section 8, things like that, teaches me that you need to take a pretty no-nonsense stance right from the outset. It's difficult to go back after things have been underway for a while. So your thoughts on having those tools?
So, I'm not here to endorse home rule for the City of Geneva. That is entirely up to this body. But I will say, with regard to rental registration, there, you know, there, you can put liens on properties. If you are, if you find code violations and those fines are not being paid, then the city has the ability to take out a lien on a property. Usually, people don't want to do that and I completely understand why administratively, it's not fun, for sure. But it is a power that a non-home rule municipality has. So that, there has to be enough of a fine there typically before you want to go down that road. But if things are lax for long enough, then that's something that can be pursued. With regard to having said tools, I would, I would open that up for discussion among the City Council.
Not tonight.
Why not?
And I had, this was just one more question. If I could get my last one, then I'm done, I promise. Regarding capacity, so there's this ring chart. And I didn't, I didn't, I didn't understand what it was telling me.
Sure.
So it says that 68% of our future capacity is in multifamily?
That's right. So capacity, the capacity analysis is also called a build-out analysis. Looks at the acreage that could be available for housing development over the next 30 years. So we use two tools. We look at where we know properties are vacant and then we look at something called the improvement over land value ratio, which is a really wonky mouthful. But essentially, what it looks at is, based on the value of the property, the land itself, and then the buildings on top of that land, if that balance is way off kilter, then we can typically assume that within the next 20 or 30 years, it's going to be redeveloped in one way or another. And so we don't, you know, in a longer process with staff where we vetted every single one of those properties that were flagged, it was sort of confirmed or refuted whether or not that was a correct assumption. So it's not just a blanket tool, it's gone through some vetting as well. And then we take all of that acreage and we look at what district in, within which it occurs. And then we say, you know, based on the maximum developments that's allowed under law now within that district, this is how many units could be built. And so it's an estimate, for sure, it's an estimate.
Right. I just was wondering how you came up with that.
Yeah, that's how we come up with it, yeah.
Thanks. I'm done.
One of the more fun things we get to do.
Paul, you're in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sort of amused by the definition of affordable. If I'm a multimillionaire and choose to spend $5,000 a month on rent, whether or not it exceeds 30% is somewhat irrelevant because most of my wealth is probably in capital and not income.
This is looking at income, though, not in capital.
Yeah, I understand. But as Thomas Piquetti pointed out, in the 21st century, capital is going to become more dominant than income, as it was through most of the history of the world. Certainly for a senior population, capital is usually more important than income. So it's somewhat, so on the high end of the scale, I don't think the definitions mean much, especially looking 26 years out when, depending on what inflation is, you could have factors of two or three in all of these numbers. But for the low-income people, I presume it's probably true, although I'm not sure, again, when it applies to seniors, whether it should be based strictly on income.
Well, right now, we know that capital is declining among the senior population and the investments that the seniors have made for 1Ks, et cetera, has declined.
Very local affair since 2008. It's not expected to continue by most economists.
And that's not what I've read nationally.
Well, what I've read says that it certainly has been true since 2008, that capital has declined for all income levels. But anyway, I agree that on the low end... But anyway, I agree that on the low end, probably, income is the important thing to measure. You say we have to have, what was it, 15 or 30% of all new housing. The problem is, housing comes up in pieces, and you can't expect necessarily the same piece of housing to have both low income and appeal to seniors who are retiring at the same time. What is this averaged over the three years from now till 2000 and whatever? I mean, if we have a housing development that's not going to qualify comes in, and six months later, a housing development that's going to qualify as low income come in, do we get credit for the sum of the two, or does one of them violate the rule?
So what... The way that APA is enforced is if a developer... If you were to refuse to permit a development within the city, and the developer would have to then make an appeal to the state appeals board, then the appeals board would then have to look at your plan and the goal that you've set and the one that you've selected of the three that the state allows you to select among. And then it would look at since you were... I believe, since you were... Since you became a non-exempt community, how many developments have occurred and what percentage of them have been affordable by the definition that the state uses?
So we get to count all the developments that occurred since we approved the plan?
Yes, that's my understanding.
So it's not each individual development has...
Well, it would depend on when the appeal was brought. So they would then have to look at historical data since the plan was approved.
The first one that comes in doesn't meet the 15%, we are in violation. Even though we know there's one coming in in a couple of months that will allow the balance to swing towards a...
To be perfectly honest, there has been no appeal since APA was enacted, so it's hard for me to say.
So that would be up to a judge to decide whether it...
The appeals board. It's not a judge.
That it applies to the first one... The first development that occurs after we approve the plan.
I'm not sure. I'll be honest with you. Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And part of that, again, is because the law hasn't been tested yet.
No, I understand.
Sure.
Alderman, Simone.
I'm a little confused.
Sure.
Which is the norm. 15% of our stock has got to be affordable housing.
New development, starting when the plan is approved.
Okay.
Or redevelopment.
Or redevelopment, so 15%. Affordable housing, according to the definition, is 30% of household income.
So that's not the state's definition. That's the definition that we use for Homes for a Changing Region. The state's definition looks at a multiplier of area median income, which for our region is somewhere around $70,000. And so it would be a multiplier of that. So in other words, you would have to... I think it's 80% of AMI, so it would be somewhere around $65,000, $62,000 a year that would have to be affordable to that family, that household.
So 15% of $62,000?
Sorry, 15% of new developments would have to meet that threshold.
Of the $62,000?
Mm-hmm.
And 30% of the 62?
Essentially, yeah. It's a bit of a more complicated formula than that, and we handed out a good fact sheet on this last time I came. That'll give you some more specifics on that, and we could circulate it again if it's helpful.
Yeah, my confusion comes with...
Sure.
Percentages of percentages of definitions.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
When it would be a lot easier for me to say, you need, you know, X amount of homes per hundred in this rental range and this buying range, et cetera.
Sure.
To get a better handle on it, because it seems just like, you know, trying to herd cats here.
Yeah, a little bit. So let me just say, too, that part of the reason that we don't just throw out a dollar value is because it's different by family size. So if you've got a four-person household, it's going to be a different affordability level than it is for an eight-person household, for example. So that's why we try not to just sort of throw numbers out there. But the median, raw median income for our region is somewhere around $70,000 the last time I checked.
Okay. And they use eight... You said...
I think it's 80% of AMI, so it's something like $62,000 a year for a family, again, of three or four, I believe.
Okay. I just had... I'm just confused as to how you end up figuring out what that actual number is.
Sure. Yeah, like I said, it's a sliding scale depending on the side of it, the size of the household.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
So it does... I don't know pages because I can't read it. It's bad. The report's going to be... A three-bedroom rental unit.
There you go.
Page?
Affordable at no more than $900, $400. Longage of the pitch, all of them valued at $147,000. Some number...
I don't know.
Forty-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-one. This considered affordable for a three-bedroom house.
I remember.
Sorry, that's on page 68. And it's just that left column that talks about what APA compliance requires.
Page what?
68.
I got a page 175.
It's 176 of your packet at 68.
Oh, I'm sorry. Right, of our plan. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I got one more question. I guess probably to Dick or to David. Do we have a good handle on this? I mean, this... These numbers and these... I mean, if I'm a developer and I come to the city of Geneva and I say, I want to build a 100-unit building, let's take the Marquette, PUD or whatever, the 200 units, 140 or 60 single apartment, one-bedroom apartments, and 40 or 60 two-bedroom apartments, and they come and they say... Or the city says, you know, we need to work with you on affordable housing, 15%. I mean, how do we appro... I mean, just out of curiosity, how do you approach... Do they approach us with that factor, or do we tell them?
What's important for us to do here is to understand their product and what they intend to build, and the number of bedrooms, as Drew was mentioning. And then we would run through that calculation to come to a number based on the formula. So it's not something where we can just lay it all out in advance. It's important to understand that this is a policy document, so this is really a first step.
Okay.
It's the city council saying, if you approve this document, that this issue is important enough. The city needs to take these initial steps and basically chip away at this issue because it's important to the community overall. And I can see, just from what we've got here, there are all kinds of other small incremental steps that we're going to be taking to build momentum behind these recommendations and policies.
So is the intent here to just to get a document in place, get a working document that we can actually have a foundation to build off of?
That is it precisely. Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alderman, finally.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There is a map on the back of our...
That's right.
And you refer to it as a possible or could be used as. Is this going to be included in the actual report that's given to the...
At this time, it's in the...
Part of it?
That's right. And part of that is because under APA, you are required to submit locations that were potentially affordable housing could be developed.
Yeah, because we're somewhat landlocked, so this seems to be only redevelopment.
So those... Dick, do you want to address that specifically? Sure.
Because we're required under the Act to identify locations, this is challenging for Geneva because we are primarily a residentially built-out community. And what we did here, there's nothing magical behind it. We looked at vacant sites that might have residential development potential. We looked at sites that were currently zoned for multifamily development that might offer some opportunity for development in this area. And we also looked at the recommendations in the recently adopted downtown master plan where housing redevelopment was incorporated into that plan. And these sites may or may not test out from a land use perspective, you know, with the development applications specifically coming in and requesting zoning. These are simply potential sites where residential development could occur, both redevelopment and development. And the other aspects of the city's development review processes would come into play if a specific development proposal were submitted to the city for review. So these sites are just really broadly indicated as potential area where residential development could take place or multifamily development in some instances.
I noticed that Geneva didn't really have any... Or at least, I don't remember. I think Batavia did, or North... Now, I don't remember which communities did, but there were some that were concentrating or talking about transportation, and we didn't really, in all aspects, discuss transportation for any of these sites, right?
Well, it wasn't seen as, from Geneva's perspective, as critical a component of...
Because I know seniors, you know, you get to a point where you don't want to drive anymore, you want to be independent, and those kind of issues.
Well, and that's why the sites in and around the downtown that are shown on this map were actually important because...
Very.
They are the sites where if senior housing was going to be placed in there...
I think it should be placed in.
In those areas, that's where it really belongs, yeah.
Thank you.
Alderman, Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I would recommend, anyone out there listening, if you haven't pulled up the packet, if you want to spend some hours sifting through it, there's a lot of interesting information, and it's really pretty eye-opening, the demographic shift that is inevitable with our aging population. And it's interesting, our housing stock seems really ill-suited to adapt to that. Let's see, you've got... Well, you answered, how's it policed? One thing in the packet is to encourage employer-assisted housing. Of course, that's not under our recommendations, but...
It's under... It's... Sorry, there are a series of recommendations also that were vetted by a steering committee of all the four towns together that were sub-regional recommendations, meaning that we recommend all of the communities work on them together. And so that was one of those.
Is that a thing... I worked for Burgess Norton here in town for decades, and I remember they built lots of houses for their employees. Is that... Is that recognized in contemporary...
It looks differently now. So I don't think that there's a hankering for a return to company towns at this point, but there is... There are tax credits that the state makes available to employers that provide, for example, down payment assistance. This is usually what it comes down to, is that an employer will offer a down payment assistance program where they'll give a grant, and then they're able to subsidize some of that through these state tax credits. And so that's been a program that's worked well primarily for large employers, but we're really...
We have several.
Sure.
And we have several.
Right.
Interesting, too, when we talk about affordable since utilities come into play for that measure, they talk about energy efficiency. I mean, so rebuilding your... Or weather stripping your old windows and that type of thing actually works toward that.
Right, right. We were... CMAP was responsible for bringing almost $25 million to the region for retrofitting programs. That money's been spent out now, but still, Nycor, I believe, offers some down... Some downwriting of the cost of energy efficiency retrofitting, so.
Let's see, I had a couple more dog-eared pages here.
Thank you for reading the entire report.
I skimmed the other tabs.
Okay.
Excuse my voice. Yes, so the... Not only are we gonna... We're gonna see an increase... Well, we're seeing, I think, with the Marquette, potential Marquette development bring in a younger demographic. So a lot of this is driven by seniors, but... Pardon me. But there will be a lot coming in on the back end that we'll need to accommodate.
Well, and that's why we try not to talk about strictly programmed senior housing because in the long run, they actually... They're calling it a barbell demographic trend right now, where the millennials and the seniors are about the same size. And it's anticipated that eventually, well, we know, that the millennials will be a bigger group than this current boom. So it's something that we have to think about in the long run, not just programming housing for seniors, but also making sure that it appeals to those people who eventually own the same homes or rent them.
And this might be for Director Ansh. Are we seeing that there might be... Given where our housing stock is now, would we be seeing significant rezoning of large swaths for higher density?
I don't know how to characterize it. I mean, I characterize it as large swaths, but I would characterize it more along the lines of very carefully placed, compact areas where redevelopment would be appropriate in the historic district where it wouldn't threaten historic resources that we have that we want to protect, sites that would be, you know, sort of prime sites for redevelopment. So yes, the answer is yes. That is certainly part of all of this. As a separate project, we've been keeping up to date just generally, but we're working on a zoning update to our downtown area under a different contract that is intended to focus attention on the areas within the downtown master plan where change is recommended. And the idea is to match up our zoning regulations and the zoning map to what we're saying as a community we want to achieve from a land use and development perspective in the downtown. So that laces in directly into this.
Thank you.
Did you want to... Is that a question?
So, given the shifting demographics, clearly, we... It's prudent to look ahead and adapt to it. I just want to be clear, this is... You know, if we adopt a mandate 15%, is this document locking us in the specifically what is in the recommendations for Geneva, or can we modify that?
So it's a plan, and the recommendation, the way it's phrased, puts the onus on the city council to make that 15% recommendation come to fruition. We... You know, that's sort of the conversation that we've had so far between the task force and the city council. That was the direction that folks wanted to go, so that's the way we put it. So it would require... This would require significant oversight. I mean, that's oversight in the sense that you'll have to be monitoring what's going on in terms of permitting in order to make that happen.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mayor Werns, I'd please...
A question for whomever is willing to answer, but to Mr. Bruno's last comment, by adopting this particular plan as is, do we have the authority, luxury, or flexibility to amend that plan down the road?
There's always the ability to amend a plan.
Second question, more of an observation. I'm curious for anyone who has more experience than perhaps we do in the field. Have you experienced in other communities who have adopted similar plans with similar recommendations where older, more... How should I say? Older stock neighborhoods, homes have been purchased en masse, lots then assembled into one, and then height being provided for new development?
To be honest, I don't know that I've been at this long enough to have seen that come to fruition because it's something that takes place over time. I have not personally witnessed that. I know that many of the previous homes plans have been used, and I will say primarily, to direct development as opposed to necessarily changing policy in the near term, but we know that that takes time.
But the assemblage of parcels, I think, would be an easy fix for achieving a lot of this.
I agree. I agree. It would seem that way.
Okay.
We've definitely seen multifamily developments happen as a result of homes plans.
Yeah, okay.
So I don't know that I've ever seen a large land assembly happen as a result, though, just to be honest.
And in our nomenclature, going from R1 to R7...
Sure.
You know, people... You know, some would say it's great, some would say, yeah, that's a great.
Sure.
Yes, okay.
Depends on who's back there.
Exactly, yeah. Thank you very much.
Of course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alderman, Simone. And then Alderman, Brown.
Thank you, Chairman. Is the 15% the number?
It is. And it's, again, so we felt... There was disgust maybe taking that number down, and the reason that we felt it was prudent to stay with 15 is because of the three goals that you can choose from and under the law, that's one of them. And the other two really come down to increasing the percentage of overall stock by three percentage points, or just bringing yourself in line with the 10% trigger that would make you exempt to begin with. So the reason that you're a non-exempt community is because less than 10% of your housing stock is considered affordable. So there's three ways, three goals from which you can choose. One is the fifteen percent one that we chose, the other is increasing your affordability, your percentage of affordable housing stock by three percentage points, and then the third is to get 10% of your housing stock to be affordable, which is sort of a bit of a misnomer considering you wouldn't be exempt at that point anyway. You would be.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman.
Alderman Brown.
You've just pointed out that by inviting a not-large number of millionaires into town for $5,000 apartments, we could raise our percentage from 10% to 13%, couldn't we? Which is clearly not a useful application of this law.
So you, the law doesn't have the same threshold of affordability that Homes for a Changing Region as a program does. The law says it's a bright line. Homes for a Changing Region says we should focus on burden. Just also to clarify, too, if you look at those forecasts, we're not using the same 30% standard for people making over $150,000. We're assuming that they're going to spend less than 30%.
The law is passed by state of Illinois, has the 72, or the regional average salary.
Right, absolutely.
Okay, all right. Which brings me to the point that the motion on the table, as printed in the agenda, is recommend the draft resolution. Who are we recommending it to?
City Council.
City Council.
For next week.
October 6th.
Yes, excuse me, October 6th. And it says, "Recommend the draft resolution adopting this program, which applies to four communities." The only part that I read in detail was the part that applied to Geneva. Am I, by my vote, approving the fact that I agree with the other three sections of the report?
You're just looking at the Geneva portion of it. Each one, each community is looking at their own subregion, their own portion of the report, so you would just be recommending to the city council formal approval of the Geneva portion of the plan.
That's exactly what I did, is I read that part in detail, but I would hope that the motion next week clearly points out that we're recommending the Geneva section of the plan, unless you want us to all read the other three sections this week.
Well, I think if you read the plan that's presented, it does only speak about the Geneva recommendations.
I'm just reading what the motion on the table is.
Mr. Chair?
The resolution is specific to Geneva.
The resolution does clarify that, thank you. Where's the resolution? It's, okay, it's, okay, so we're approving the resolution as, resolution 2014-dash-whatever. Okay, all right.
Mr. Chair.
And that does specifically point out Geneva as the, okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, I'm satisfied.
Alderman Flanagan.
Yeah, to that, I just want, thank you, Mr. Chairman, but to that, it does talk about subregional.
That's right.
So where does that enter into the picture?
So that...
If we're just voting on the Geneva portion.
Right, absolutely. So we try to come up with, we've come up with, offer all the preceding plans that we've done where we have inter-jurisdictional recommendations. Typically, we find the best way to do that is to have some kind of a steering committee that has elected official staff members, and then typically task force members on it from every community, so that they're developing the subregional plan in consort with the municipal plans. And we find that it's best to do that because if we take it to one board and they like the subregional recommendations and then another board doesn't, it's sort of an endless downward spiral of approving recommendations.
Any other questions, comments from the dais? Any from the audience? Mayor, any?
Mr. Chairman, I'm curious if any members of the commission have any strong opinions that perhaps weren't included in the final product? Or was the process as smooth and enjoyable as you anticipated, or was it more complicated than you ever hoped for? Just out of curiosity, because we've got an august group of men and women, and I thought, you guys had to do the lion's share of the work. Oh, God, Chuck.
No, I've not called God anymore. Just from you, Kevin. For those of you that don't know me, I think most of you know me, I've been here a few times. I'm Chuck Miles. In addition to being a Geneva resident for about 25 years, I'm also the chairman of the Board of AID, Association for Individual Development, which has a real nice, ongoing relationship with Geneva through the 708 Board. John Ford's here for the House on South Street, as well as AID provides victim services for the police department and has gotten rave reviews for that. First, I wanted to thank Dick, on behalf of all of us that went through these meetings and the workshop we had over at Public Works Office, for the leadership he gave on this and helped guide us through and help us understand all the things we were trying to move around. And I think, you know, it bothers me a little bit, we get too worried about, you know, making a number to make a number to fulfill some requirement with the government, particularly when it's kind of hard to understand how hard that requirement really is in case we don't meet it. But I think a lot of this stuff is the stuff that's right to do because this is what we in Geneva do. One of the things that an agency like AID does is work to provide housing for people with mental health issues as well as developmental disabilities. And there's a lot of people in our community that need that, and that also falls under affordable housing. Geneva, or AID, has been meeting with developers using property tax credit financing. We're very interested in developing housing, and we've done this in Aurora. We're working with an organization to develop 40 houses. Eight of those will be dedicated to people with some type of mental health or developmental disability. And through tax credit financing, it's a very affordable way to do it, so we're looking for land and looking for places to be able to do this. We'd like some of the tri-cities, we don't have much in the tri-cities. I'd love for it to be in Geneva because I just love Geneva. But there are, you know, don't focus on so much on the type of person that would live there, focus on the fact that we have a lack of affordable housing across our community. So I think if you look at, read a little bit more on recommendation number eight, I think was a very strong message to me of what Geneva really is. So you read more in the recommendation itself, we'll talk more about the needs of all of our citizens. So that's what I had, I wanted to thank everybody I worked with on it, and if you have any other questions, I can answer those. And I'm a Packer fan, so I'm in no hurry to get home and watch the Bears.
Neither am I.
Any other, any other comments? I guess Mary or Dick, I'm not sure which one to ask this of. If we adopt this, what's next? How do we go about this? I mean, it's always great to see a plan, but then, you know, we have to put it into action, and it's the hard part.
Okay, well, how long you want to stay here tonight? Because, I mean, there is a lot of work.
Yeah, I know, I can see that, that's why I'm wondering. How long a span is this?
What I would see as a next step is to do some strategic planning, which you're going to be doing soon as a council, and try to hone in on, say, one or two, or maybe several of these recommendations, and start plotting a course of next steps. And I would think that the task force would certainly be a part of that investigative work that needs to be done. There's certainly some staff-level work, support to the task force that would be required, but this involves getting into the details of, and plotting a series of steps that you would go through as a community to achieve these recommendations. This is, this involves sustaining effort, going out many years into the future, and I would think that if the council approved this document, that it really is more about saying to the community at large, and really saying to the staff, that this is important and for the long-term health of the community and the long-term future of the community, we need to start working on this. Maybe it's chipping away at it, but it's sustained effort over many years. And there are other communities in the region that have been at this kind of programming and support for many, many years. And it's kind of a never-ending job.
Reading this, that's what I thought. I mean, this is not some quick fix. This is a long, detailed, lengthy set of rules, discussions, meetings, just to get this somewhat to the point where you start to implement something like this.
Well, having a discussion about affordable housing in new residential development or residential redevelopment, by approving a plan like this, you're saying that needs to be a topic of discussion. As an example.
Mary, yeah?
I just wanted to add a, I guess, a footnote to that. As everybody knows, this has been a longstanding goal in our strategic plan for many years to address housing and affordable housing, senior housing included. And this is the first step in doing that, as Dick has indicated, and I would agree with him. I think our approach, which often is my philosophy in these projects or programs that seem insurmountable, is I ask, "How do you eat an elephant?" And my approach is typically one bite at a time. And you take it, you take the recommendations and you separate those out, and then you determine how you're going to tackle each one, and I think that we can do that through our strategic planning process. And then staff will obviously follow the direction of the council as you approach each one of those recommendations through strategic planning.
Thank you. Alderman Brown.
A simple housekeeping point, we agreed that we're only approving tonight the Batavia section. The Geneva section, excuse me, which comes to my second recommendation, is that before next week one, we remove the Batavia section from the copy which is online. If you bring up the agenda online tonight, it does have the Batavia section in, which makes it incredibly hard to download for anybody who wants to look at it. If we were to remove the Batavia section from the online part of tonight's agenda, it will download slightly faster. My third recommendation is that in next week's packet for the council meeting, that instead of trying to include this, which makes this packet so difficult for people to download, that we just include a link to the Geneva section instead of trying to download the whole thing. We were sitting here tonight wondering why it was so hard to download. It is a huge package, partly because anybody who, at home, who tried to download tonight, the first thing they come up with is the Batavia section. That's what confused me, I'm sorry. Shouldn't be there. What we are proving tonight is what's on our table, which does not have the Batavia section.
Yeah, staff is saying we can do a link.
Yeah. That should be removed because it, online, it's sitting there. Thank you.
So if we remove it as part of our packet, I get that, but personally, I think it helps add context to have the, this is a plan for an entire subregion. I enjoyed seeing how changing demographics and things like that impact our neighboring communities as well as Geneva. I don't know where else an interested resident would be able to find that information except by looking on our website. So we can separate it for our purposes if we choose, but if we have, you know, something available for people to see the whole thing.
We could have two links, one to the part that's relevant to Geneva and another to the whole package.
It will be done.
But the whole package is very big. Takes a long time to download, even with a fast machine.
That, staff is, Mary, you've already committed to that, that will be done then.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Not a problem, thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right, we don't, we'll just go to vote then. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Item five, new business, the scariest part of the meeting sometimes.
The microphone is on.
That's okay, you never know. No new business. Oh, wait, the Bears are winning seven, seventeen to three. So...
It's early.
It's...
You didn't need to tell us.
Well, there you go. And so there is no new business. The upcoming meeting, the next Monday night meeting, is a special committee of the whole. Mary, it will not be here, will it, the next Monday night's meeting?
It will be at Public Works because...
Will be at Public Works.
The chambers will be under construction.
Right, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that. It will be at Public Works next Monday because it is the fifth Monday, it is a policy discussion. Public Works.
We're looking at Public Works, we will let you know, we'll post it.
Okay.
It will not be televised where it is.
Okay, it will not be televised, that is, and it will not be here, we do know that. Mary's house, maybe, no. Next item on the agenda, adjournment.
It's all moved.
Motion by Simoneon, seconded by Alderman Sina. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meetings adjourned. Mike?